We are now live.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
All right, sorry for the delay, I'd like to welcome everybody and we're gonna start out with the pledge of allegiance.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chelsea, can you say the prayer for us?
Heavenly Father, we thank you today for your many wonderful blessings, Lord, the gift of life that you give us and the opportunity to serve today. Lord, I'm asking that you would just overshadow this meeting, overshadow our staff, the children, Lord, that we would, that we would minister to, that we would teach and instruct. I pray today, God, that you would give us wisdom in this meeting, that you give us understanding, that we would make decisions that best impact our community and these children. I pray, Father, today, that all that we do would glorify you. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, next time on the, to go through will be the future board meetings, February 11th, 2025, here at 6:00 PM, February 25th, 2025, 6:00 PM, and March 11th, 2025, here at 6:00 PM. There's no relocations to the agenda.
Um, we just had a couple, um.
Small items here.
Yes.
Some on that, I guess, the HR and then a donation.
That donation also, yes.
Okay. All right, next item, uh, public recommendation, recommendation for donations. First item, need to approve a hundred dollar donation from Holtman's Nursery and Landscaping for Northfield Girls Basketball.
Pinkout.
Pinkout. I guess I'm gonna read them all, right?
Yes.
Just read through them all. Next one will be a recommendation to approve the fifty dollar donation from Ruann First Brother Church for Northfields Outlights in memory of Larry Elzeroff. Recommendation to approve the hundred dollar donation from Troy and Stacy Bear for Northfield Girls Basketball. Pinkout. Bill, do I have a motion to approve all these?
Second.
It's been, uh, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Five.
So move.
All right, we're gonna do one of the most exciting parts of our meeting. We're gonna do some recognitions. I wanna change the camera here so we can have, see them all. So I'm gonna start out and have Mrs. Rebecca Macy come to us. So tonight, we're going to recognize our MetroNorth Elementary Staff of the Year and Teacher of the Year. Uh, this is, nothing against all the business part of the meeting, but this is the most exciting part of the meeting. But we'll just wait, Mr. Drake, until we get the three R's, because I'm gonna stay out of these. I haven't seen out of those, so. So, um, as MSD of Wild West County, we want to congratulate you on having the, uh, MetroNorth Elementary Staff of the Year at MetroNorth. I would like to give you something here. On behalf of First Farmers Banking Trust, uh, we always have, uh, they sponsor this, and we will give you a fifty dollar staff spotlight, uh, to our online store. And so, this is it. So let's give her a round of applause. That's the most way. Um, I do wanna read one thing that you wrote down. So one thing that we do, at the end of the year when we do this, we have, uh, teachers or staff can do this, but they don't have to. They can actually be nominated for the actual district of the year. And so, there's one of the questions says, why I love my position. I asked the staff to write something. I'm gonna read what you wrote, okay?
Remember.
Cause I love my position because I get to interact daily with little ones who are in a tender development stage. I thought that was very good. The first impressions of school and teachers will be formed by my conduct as a teacher in these formative years. I also love my peers and the people I work with. So I thought that was excellent too. Yes. And so, do you wanna share anything about your position that I wrote?
Um, I just, I love what I do. So I'm thankful to have this position and to work alongside that pretty lady back there. This is our fourth year, so we are definitely good partners.
Good team, so.
Very thankful, very blessed. Love it. Yeah.
Let Mrs. Moore, will she share anything about?
So when you think of who you want working with our youngest learners, it is the dynamic duo of these two ladies. It is, to work in a classroom, um, with another adult is sometimes challenging, that you need to be able to read each other's minds and be able to give each other a look and be like, I'm on it without saying a word. And.
We've got that.
They do. They do. Um, every student that has the opportunity to work with you is truly, truly blessed. And Mrs. Macy pours her heart and soul into everything she does. She sees, maybe, I'm gonna go with an opportunity for one of our little ones, and she jumps on it. Um, and I know that is because they work so closely together. She advocates for kids, even just simple things like, I think we could do this just a little bit better, or I'm worried about this little one and needing more time with this. She's just always thinking about how she can help impact not just the little ones that are in their room all day long, like others, and as well as our faculty. Um, I can't, I mean, it's simple things that you do, like clean up after. I mean, she is the cleaner upper at the staff lounge every time we have a carry in. I don't know if you know that or not.
Yes, I do know that, and it's appreciated.
And my dishes just turn up washed. Otherwise, they'd be down there for a while. Um, it's just those little things that Mrs. Macy does that brings such light to our kids and to our staff. And she's just amazing. So, thank you.
Give her another round of applause.
I will go say in the corner.
All right. Now, we have Miss Amy Sterling come to us today, see, MetroNorth Elementary Teacher of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. Do the same thing here, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, one thing that we can talk about, uh, I'll say eighty-one rules, and I'm not gonna say any more about that, but you can ask later about why we say eighty-one rules. Um, hmm, some people are thinking right now what that means, but, but one thing that we really know about Ms. Sterling, uh, the things that she brings, uh, to the students, and I'll let Mrs. Moore share more too, but, share more, Mrs. Moore, share more. That wasn't very good, but, but one thing that she really does well is, um, bringing those experiences to the, the students, a lot of different activities that, um, I've seen her do. Uh, we've been a part of some different things that she has allowed us to look at, which is really neat. Uh, but also, just teaching the students, um, to be the, the character that they need to be. Um, I actually had an admin meeting today. We did a little clip of a movie, and it was about, um, long story, but basically what you do in the classroom as far as helping students to learn, uh, not just the three Rs, but all the other things that are very, very important in, in children's lives. So we would appreciate what you do there. So, Mrs. Moore.
I could probably go on for hours about, um, Amy Sterling and just what she brings.
Not all stories.
But I'll just share a few. Amy pours everything she has into students. And when you look at the dynamics of her classroom, they are wise for what her learners need, um, and, and their way of their academics, as well as just in their social and emotional development. And she delivers her very best to them every single day. Um, she's not afraid to take risks, that always, at the same time, the rewards are huge. Um, I think it was on Friday that I sent her an email about opening up her classroom to a pre-service teacher, and that takes a lot of trust, cause you're giving up your little ones for someone, and she said, yes. And that's just continuing to pay forward for our, for our future teachers. And so, um, she's just amazing. The more children, two of the three would say Amy Sterling gives the best hugs. Their mother gives them the look. Uh, and then they, you know, got to come up right next to you, Ma. Um, but just gives her very best to every student that she reaches. And isn't afraid to keep learning.
No, you have to. It gets boring if you don't keep learning, so.
Would you like to share any more?
I would like to share something, and that is the fact that what you said about Mrs. Macy and Mrs. Holly and that team, I've seen firsthand, cause my baby, they were her first.
I was really gonna cry.
They were her first school experience, and they made that girl love school from day one. And they loved, she loved them. And Tenley knows who, when somebody really loves her. And she knew that year that she was greatly loved by them. And I will always love them because of that. So, not about me, but about them. It felt like I needed to say that, cause I've seen it firsthand. They're wonderful.
Let's give Amy a round of applause. Mr. Grayson, take a picture so we can have the three of you.
For yours, yeah. Are you in the middle?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Perfect, and I'll walk up here, cause I get yelled at. Brilliant.
I ain't getting yelled at.
Zoom with the feet, not with the whatever. Thanks again. I know you need to take off, so thanks for coming and support from other staff members too.
Thank you.
All right, we have a presentation, and Mrs. Becky Bradley, who is our Food Service Director, um, is gonna present, and I don't know if both of them, Carrie is gonna come up too at the same time. So I'll have you, so I can have you on camera.
Right here?
Yep, looks good. And, yeah, so we can, you can see the board, the people can see you live on Facebook. We are on, Mr. Greg, right?
Yes, I checked this before I started.
I'm sure, yeah. So, I don't know why it didn't work the first time, but we're good. So, anyway, they're gonna share a little bit about, uh, uh, food service and some different things that are going on, and I'm gonna swipe here so I can get, if it works again. So I'll put pictures, and you can tell me when to move the pictures too, so.
My name's Becky Bradley. I'm the Food Service Director. I've been in this for, over three years.
How many?
Over thirty. So, I'm gonna retire here hopefully in a year and a half, so things work out. But, uh, last e-learning day, my staff all got together, and we took the Food Learning Force from the state, and everybody passed with flying colors. It's a lot to learn. And then, um, last Friday, the state had been for a state inspection in Northville, because she was very impressed with the quality of food, the quantity of food, and, and she was still really impressed with everything. The salad bar, the food on the hot tray looked great. She was impressed with the brownie on the a la carte, and the kids were gobbling through them, and she loved it. So we got an A+ for our state inspection. So she was very impressed with that. Now, uh, I had a lady approach me about a year ago. It should went to put in a school garden. And I'll have to be honest, at first, I was kinda hesitant, because I was understaffed, kinda drained, and I thought, oh, that's the last thing I need is a school garden. But with the trend now farm to school, everybody's doing it. So I kept an open mind, and believe it or not, it was not bad at all. I was impressed how smoothly things ran due to this lady. So this is my staff. My two, uh, dishwashers are out pulling weeds and harvesting crop. And they actually love doing it. They do it every day for a little. My total only three days a week. So, but this is two of my, uh, dishroom ladies, and they're, all they're working. This is some of our first harvest, and the kids just love that we put it on our salad bar, we put it on our hot line for the salads, and the kids just gobble it up. Um, yeah, go ahead. This is some more of the produce that we had. Now, the, the remain, I'll have to be honest, we bought that. She hasn't grown that. But we're, we're, we're working on it with the towers and stuff. But the vegetables on the left was pulled from the school garden, Southwood. Okay, next one. And here, you can see the variety of vegetables we put on our salad bar. And hopefully, we're gonna try some new vegetables this summer to help with this too. So we're gonna get together the next couple of weeks, and we're gonna give her our list of demands, and she's gonna try to grow it for us.
I will deliver.
List of demands.
Yeah, what the kids like, what they don't like. So, but that kind of shows you what we do at our salad bar. So, is there another slide?
Yes.
This is just a couple, okay, this is the tower that's in each of the schools. This was taken at Southwood Elementary. Of course, there's nothing grown right now, but I think they're working on some stuff. So, each of the schools have a tower. And this is one of the other high schools. This is salad bar too. So, it shows you the variety of stuff that we offer to kids every day on a daily basis. So, but I'll have to admit, it went a lot smoother, a lot, it was great. I mean, my girls didn't even complain about it, but when they, who's gonna go out and pick the garden? And one day, I was walking by the garden, there's kids out there, and they were cramming strawberries and them cheese, they were cramming, you know, the tomatoes. And so they go, are we in trouble? I said, no, it's, it's fine, help yourself. And they thought that was great. They were just out there, just trying all kinds of stuff. And she was great about letting the kids do that. I thought that was wonderful. So, this is what the kids, what the staff call the garden lady. They don't know her name, they just call her the garden lady. The kids call her the garden teacher. So that's the way we address her. This is Carrie for the Purdue Extension, and she's gonna talk a little bit about her program, okay?
Again, like Becky said, my name is Carrie. I'm with Purdue University's Nutrition Education Program, and, um, I answer to the crazy garden lady, the crazy food lady, you know, all kinds of things. Um, so I've got a couple of programs that I want to highlight tonight, why I'm here with you all. Um, but first of all, I want to note where, who phrased, or who coined the term dream big? Was that a you thing, a board thing? How long has that been around?
That's a long time. It's been ten years now. So, it was a corporation thing that we did together. Dream big, work hard was our logo.
Well, past year, the past year, um, in my role, I have truly come to appreciate and recognize that MSD truly does embody that from the bottom, or from the ground up. Um, you guys have allowed me to dream big, which a lot of people don't. Um, Mike has also been kind enough to guide me sometimes in saying, whoa, Carrie, like, hold on, you know, there's a chain of command. In a way, we do things, um, just because I get so excited and passionate about the work that I do. Um, so currently, I'm in the Metropolitan School Districts, uh, in some way, in all of the schools. Um, we have, like Becky said, last year, um, I approached her and I asked, hey, let's do a garden. Um, I approached several people and said, hey, let's do a garden. Um, Becky and Amber Lewis were kind enough to say, show us what you got. So, we had to, of course, find a champion teacher out at Southwood. Tapable Klein, who teaches sixth and seventh grade science, was kind enough to, um, accept the opportunity, uh, to work with us. And in the course of a couple of months, I mean, we got the first grant funding, March, I'm gonna say March 15th, I got the award. This is a low-level grant, fifteen hundred dollars. Um, for fifteen hundred dollars, we were able to transform a barren courtyard into a teaching experience, a learning experience for students. Um, we put three hundred pounds of produce into the school cafeteria last year, um, as well as into the back room for culinary lessons. Um, we had a fun day that we took the blender bike out there and let the kids get peppers and tomatoes and made salsa. Um, so the garden had great success. Um, fast forward to July-ish, um, we got another award. So we have three thousand dollars from Whole, uh, the Whole Kids Foundation this year to keep that garden going and to, uh, produce sustainability over the next couple of years. Uh, eventually, we're gonna talk about cows and chickens and go, I don't know. We'll talk about that later, another time. Um, so, the, the garden is just, it's been a true blessing. Like Becky said, um, the staff enjoys it. It's a therapeutic moment for them to be able to get outside and get their hands dirty. Kids love it. I had a little one approach me last week and asked me, hey, remember the salsa this year? Can we do cucumbers? So I coordinated with my health and human sciences educator. We're gonna do refrigerator pickles this year. And so it's just, it's been a lot of fun. It's been a great opportunity for the students, um, for the staff, and for myself to be able to provide that. Um, I'm excited to see where it goes from here. Um, in addition, she showed a picture of the tower up there. Um, this was an opportunity that came through a partnership with the community foundation. Um, in Indiana, we obviously have a very short growing season. Um, and unfortunately, that's something I'm passionate about, so I needed to figure out ways to break that barrier. So I approached, um, all of the administrators and said, hey, do you guys have a champion? Let's, let's do this. I'm gonna make it easy. And so we were able to obtain a tower garden for each of the schools. And they're all using them very differently. Um, here you'll see Southwoods in their main commons area, and, um, most of the others I know at MetroNorth, she keeps hers in the classroom.
We keep it out in the, in the common.
Okay, in the common area. And then a couple others are doing them in the classroom for a variety of things. Um, we have done salad parties at Southwood Elementary that the rice room hosted, because they grew. Um, and that truly was a great experience to be able to see these ten unique individuals that have so many obstacles in front of them, um, take the opportunity to become farmers and engineers and educators, as well as they gathered the entire second grade student body and told them about the process, walked them through what they did, um, where their food comes from. It doesn't come from the grocery, it comes from our heavens and our earth. And so, it was really great. To see seventy little people get excited about lettuce, like literally, when we say salad party, it was plates of lettuce. And I have students telling me, I don't like salad. I don't like lettuce. I'm allergic to lettuce. They all tried it. Every single child tried it, and several came back for more. So, um, we've got, I think it's, uh, Sharp Creek right now, they're teaching statistics and probability with their tower garden. So, so many different opportunities cross-curricularly that, um, I'm happy to be able to provide, and that you guys have given me the opportunity. Um, third, this is my baby right now, so I'm, I'm very passionate about what's going on at Southwood, uh, Impact Pantries. Um, they, uh, this is the one where Mr. Kipper had to say, whoa, like, don't get excited and don't jump into it without all the right people in place. Um, and again, Amber Lewis said, hey, I'll be that person. So, in October, we received, or over the summer, I received money from the health department. Um, and in October, we decided we are gonna pilot our first Impact Pantry, which is a food and wellness pantry. And it is at Southwood. And we currently, um, currently, there's funding in place for eleven schools throughout Wild West County to receive these. Um, I think that Southwood just wanted to display and demonstrate the success before we start having those conversations elsewhere. Um, I think that success speaks highly in some of the testimonies that we received. Um, Amy Long gathered some, some quotes from people that have used this pantry, and, um, I'm just gonna share a couple of those with you, Becky, go on. Um, the food pantry at Southwood High School has been a huge blessing to my family. My kids look forward to seeing what we receive every week. I've been able to prepare wonderful meals from the items we get. I really appreciate having the food pantry available at our school, and I would love to see it incorporated in other schools so families can benefit. Um, another one that really, really struck me. I'm thankful for Impact Pantries. Given the economy and how everything has gotten expensive, Impact Pantries helped to bridge this gap. With fresh fruits and vegetables along with meat and eggs, it has helped cut down on our weekly spending. I also enjoy the recipes that are provided. It has created some fun in the mundane of daily cooking. I'm very thankful for being able to participate with Impact Pantries. So, Impact Pantries, again, aside from the food, uh, we also thrive on the wellness end of it. So we're able to provide items that families might not otherwise have access to, such as laundry soap, hygiene items, feminine products, um, and of course, you know, the food that we spoke of. And a lot of that's able to be done through partnerships with MPS, who, who provides our eggs weekly. Um, we work with Dowd's, who provides apples for us, um, Second Harvest, and Oswalt Commons. And now, we are happy to announce that we have also partnered with Wild West County, um, the Community Cellar Grant. We have received seventy-five thousand dollars to help boast Impact Pantries throughout Wild West. Um, ready for this? Here's the data on it. I'm a data girl, so I've gotta share. Um, on average, we're serving about twenty-two families a week. We have had weeks that we serve up to thirty-two. Um, and then there's lowest fourteen. So about a hundred and thirty-two individual family, or individuals each week are serviced through this pantry, and we send out about eight hundred pounds of food every single week. Um, and that would not be possible without your incredible nurse at Southwood, Amy Long. She has been a rock star, to the point now that I'm able to step back and she runs the show. So, it's been, it's been a great opportunity, and I'm super excited that you're allowing me to, you know, have serviced the families of the Metropolitan School District.
So I will say, as you can tell, she has a lot of enthusiasm about this. Um, and since she called me out though a couple times, uh, I will tell you that.
In the best way. I've learned from you, and I've grown.
The enthusiasm is great. It's always, um, better to have somebody slow down than to try to motivate them, cause you don't have to motivate Carrie, uh, of being passionate about what she's doing. So we really do appreciate that. We appreciate that people are getting involved. I think we said that we would have, you know, Southwood has been good, um, with, uh, being kind of a pilot and seeing some good things happening and, uh, maybe some other changes later. But, uh, we do appreciate you and appreciate Becky actually getting involved with some of the meetings that you have as far as, uh, helping, uh, others in our community. So, uh, we do appreciate all the things you have done, and, uh, we appreciate your enthusiasm.
Yeah, they work. So I thank your staff and your team out there. So, it's been great.
Give her a round of applause.
Hi, Mr. Becky, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How would a chicken coop look in the courtyard of Southwood?
Chicken coop? I thought we were doing hogs and pigs.
I'll do all the things. You can leave the space, and I'll do the things. Because somebody will sit up and ask me, they said, what can you do to copy up on our work? As far as maintaining the courtyard? I said, oh, I can do all kinds of things. And we, we can do that.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or we'll let you be dismissed now.
Yeah, uh, next item is a public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any? Seeing none. Uh, next item is, we need to have approval of the minutes from last meetings on January fourteenth. And we had three different meetings, if you recall. Um, it's all right. I think we'll just go ahead and approve all three of them. Uh, we had the regular, regular meeting, reorganization meeting, and the Board of Finance meeting. Do we need any discussion on any of that, or have a motion?
We'll move. Second.
Have a motion, is that, all those in favor?
Five.
So move. Next item would be the approval of the financial reports, and the first one would be claims.
And payroll.
Payroll, yeah, together.
Questions about claims? I have them all right here. And payroll, if, if you wanna go on to payroll, there's no questions about claims. Uh, pretty standard. Um, as Dr. King was talking about last week, we had, or two weeks ago, we had two different ones, but one was a lot of payout of, um, some different, um, grants and different things like that. It's pretty standard now.
I moved accept. Claims and payroll?
Second.
Then, uh, there's a motion on the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move.
And last, two weeks ago, again, uh, the Board of Finance and also regular, um, all those financials were given to you. So there's no wait till the end of the month, of course, for February, uh, to do the end of the month. So I think we'll be ready to go on to.
Yeah. Next one, we'll go through HR. Got a nice list here. The first one is under, uh, employment. Debbie Martinez, Office Manager, WMAP, uh, effective four eight of twenty twenty-five. Uh, resignation, Chelsea Kirkland.
What's your deal on that company?
He's got it updated.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Gotta go on here.
She printed that off.
Yep, sorry. All right, uh, back up here. Next one under employment would be Amanda Austin, uh, fifth grade girls basketball, uh, Southwood Elementary, uh, starting effectively immediately. Uh, Karen Tartt, fifth grade girls basketball, also, Southwood Elementary, starting immediately. Uh, next one would be resignation, Chelsea Kirkland, pre-K thirties, I guess, teacher, Southwood Elementary. That's the end of, uh, school year twenty, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Then we have, uh, leave one eighty-six, number one eighty-six. Uh, that's to begin February sixth, twenty twenty-five, for approximately four to six weeks. Uh, moving on, uh, we have retirements. Uh, Larry Vaughn, teacher, whites. Uh, that's gonna happen the end of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then, uh, we have. And then we have Mike Kiefer, superintendent. He's going to retire at the end of, I guess it'd be 6/30 of 2025.
You read that correctly?
Don't want to see that, but that's going to happen. Okay, then now we're going to go through Northfield spring coaches. We've got quite a few here. Looks like we have 22 of them, so bear with me. Number one would be Kyle France, head softball. Then we have, looks like three assistant softball. They are Avery Isley, Corey Fuller, Jimmy Rife. The next one would be Abby Mitchell. That'd be a volunteer assistant softball. And then we have Joseph Mitchell will be the head baseball. Remington Monks, assistant baseball, along with Braden Ripwinger, assistant baseball. As he approached you. The next two, Sam Berkoff would be the JV assistant baseball. Micah Higgins, JV baseball. Bryce Campus, assistant baseball. Kevin Lemming, assistant baseball. Marion Lom, head tennis. Cassie Dyson, assistant tennis. Heather Hayden, head track. Larry Vaughn, assistant track. Nick Lemming, assistant track. Tricia Oswald, assistant track. Hannah Brubaker, assistant track. Braxton Delgado, volunteer assistant. Joseph Delgado, volunteer assistant. Michelle Rice, is that junior on?
That'd be track, yes.
Track junior on. And Alyssa McCall, volunteer assistant. Okay?
Yes.
So with all those being read, I have an approbation to approve, motion to re-roll that.
I'll move.
All right. I got a motion now, a second. Biggest second, it gets easier. This motion failed.
Since it's all together, you have to hire all these people, so you better take it.
Well, it says recommended by the board for Mr. Kiefer.
So we want to like, take that one out?
Yeah, we all disagree on that.
So we can, we want to go back through them? We can approve each one? Back up?
Yeah, slate minus one.
Yeah.
I'll reluctantly second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and say, all those in favor, say aye. Motion approved.
And I do want to just share with you, Larry Vaughn. Larry Vaughn has been 44 years teaching at White's, junior senior high school. And he's taught 25 years as head coach. And as you can tell, you actually hired him to be assistant track coach too. So I don't know if he'll continue on that or if that will be his last year with that. We'll have to wait to see. But we appreciate all the years that he has served. I know I was principal there for three years and he was teacher there. Tim Drake was there for several years teaching with Mr. Vaughn. He's done different positions there as far as a teacher goes. Used to be PE when we were more traditional at the school. And that's kind of changed a lot. But he's, he's done a great job working with some of the more challenging students at the, at the school. And that's because of his creative ways of making things work, I guess I'll say. And so we appreciate all the things he's done over the years. And I'm glad that he's continuing and helping us coach here this spring too. But that's not until the end of the school year. So we appreciate all that he has done, so.
Well, I think with you, Mike, I've only been here four, going on five, but I've been a privilege of working with you. And I know these guys have worked with you longer than anybody. So I know we all hate to see you leave, but.
Appreciate that. It's been an honor and privilege to be here at MSD. You know, I was at Oak Hill for 23 years and came back home and done a few things here. At White's for three years, four years at, at Northfield and assistant here one year. And then this is my ninth year, which is kind of hard to believe. It's been nine years altogether in this capacity, 40 years for myself. So I just appreciate that. And like I said, it's been an honor and privilege. It was a very, very tough decision. I've already talked to you guys about that. But I think it's a great time. We have a great board here that's cohesive and, and have a lot of a great vision. And there's a lot of great people that will continue on and things will just go very smoothly, I know, in the transition, so. But I'm not going anywhere. So if you ever want to call and I'll give you advice or opinions or anything like that.
Weather delays and.
Weather delays. I'll have a hard time sleeping in anyway, so yeah, I can tell you if it's time to delay or not. Again, just thank you. We will put something out as far as from the corporation with this. Our communications person is ill, and so that's going to take a few more days. We're going to maybe do it tonight, but pretty much everybody knows and just appreciate everything. I'm not going to be a lame duck. I want to still work hard at everything I'm doing. And you can still push me to do other things that you want me to do. So I appreciate again, all the things you've allowed me to do here at MSD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one we have is reports. Do you have anything you'd like?
Not specifically through the reorganization like we did and just that short meeting after that.
Okay. Mike, superintendent's report?
Yeah, I'm just going to run through this quickly. I've done this before, just a state of MSD. This won't, I just want to kind of highlight just a few things here. And so let's see if we can do this again. It doesn't go off. So just give me a second here. All right. So this year, in the past, I would do January and I'd go through every single thing, all the athletics and things like that. And unfortunately, sometimes you miss something and I don't want to miss anything, so I'm just going to go along. So interesting to note that in January of 2024, we had the first early leadership grant. That's just something through the state, but I just thought it was something that was news we put on there. 1003 flexibility waivers were approved. There were two of those. Project process begins. That was a huge thing that we continue on doing, but that's what really began. And we were up 34 students on the ADM count from October. So that's those three months. So we go the next three months, family friendly schools. It's always good to have our schools that are recognized for that. Some make it a priority that that's what they apply for. I think all of our schools are family friendly, but if you, there are certain things that you have to do to apply for that. And then the state will recognize you on that. The solar eclipse, I put that on there because that's like a once in a lifetime. I guess we had an early release and a lot of talk about that for a long, long time. But we finally made that happen and it wasn't cloudy, so we watched it. Our graduation always is a highlight of, of our schools. Bridge had 174 students that graduated, Northfield 62 and Southwood 64. And that was at Ford Theater again. So that's, that's definitely a highlight. Next three months, of course, we started school. We had additional SROs, college credits were earned, many, many of them. We didn't necessarily count them all up. But again, I can say, Mr. Drake.
629.
What?
I think it was 629.
Oh, 629, there you go. Founder's Fest under construction parade. You know, we get involved in a lot of different community events, the White Corporate Cup. I know it might've been because of my lack of golfing skills that we lost, but we still participated and that was fun. And then the last three months, of course, updated the contract with the help of, of the board and teachers association and starting salary $47,000, which we talked about that before, which is really higher than almost every place around us here. Vodis, the greatest place to work in Waukesha County, second year in a row. Of course, with Heartland Career Center. Mr. Driscoll has done a lot of work with that. But we finally got to the point where we had the ROP bids and the Nip School project all completed so that can move forward, along with the other school districts. School board members reelected, the three of you. And so like I said, another good time for me because we have a very good board that's moving forward in the next several years. Sharp Creek Elementary, recognized by the IDLE of having 95% plus passing rate on iRead. And of course, the graduation rates. In 2024, I've mentioned this last week, two weeks ago again, Northfield was number one amongst all of our border schools. And Southwood, number two. Last year, Southwood was first. And so it kind of flip flopped a little bit. And so we always have great stats there. And then I just put some other things there. The donations that you approve every board meeting. Went through all those again, it's about $83,897.59. The education fund and operations fund, rainy day fund, on a very good, healthy balances. Some general information, all the amazing field trips that we have. I've done that before, but I didn't want to put every single one because you know there's just lots of them. Also great, a lot of successful school programs amongst all of our schools. Melissa Ball, our transportation director, had to test drive a bus today, number two. Again, if anybody's willing to want to be a bus driver, we're still open for applications. There's only one application left, so you better hurry. And then the other thing I put in here, project planning, ongoing and finished digital signs, locker rooms, weight rooms, tennis courts, Northfield Elementary, Metro North children rendition, fencing, parking lot, driveway, entryway, et cetera. So just a lot of, lot of things going on, a lot of balls in the air, druggle to do all these different projects. And really, a lot of it's obviously the board. You are the ones that have to approve and allow us to make improvements to our school districts. We appreciate that. Some other general information, the fine arts awards that our band choir art receive and athletic awards and athletic combined with academic and then robotics statement, world's competition. And throughout the year, several exemplary behavior reports, student athletes and coaches. And of course, there's a strategic plan that we continue to, to utilize. That is our similar statement, our goal is to strengthen MSD amidst a challenging environment and sustain it for many years to come. I think we're doing a great job doing that and that will continue. And then of course, we're already here in 2025. So just a quick update of 2024, not as specific before, but when I, very specific, sometimes I see heads nod amongst the audience because it gets kind of long to talk about all those. Maybe not the audience, maybe the people around here. That's all I have for that. But I do have something else though, I guess. I need to get out of this real quick. I just wanted to share a couple of other things. Next meeting that we have in February, we will have wide end construction here. And they'll do a little bit more of a formal report. And we will also have some more drone, drone footage. And of course, it's not going to be the whole building up, but it'll show a lot of different things. I know I give you some pictures every once in a while, but they'll come and give us an update. Also, I want to let you know that the legislative session is really hot and heavy still. There are more bills even now, they're all over with, again, so many more bills. But 102 house bills, 83 senate bills for a total of 185 that are education related. Now, there's like 1,500 altogether. We know that that's not how many are going to pass, but it's interesting. Several that we're watching, Senate Bill 1 is the property tax relief. And I will tell you that obviously there's, there's winners and losers when we have that. Of course, property tax relief, if there's relief, that obviously is winner. But then when there's relief with that, and there also can be losers. And right now, with what they are projecting, it would be an $800,000 per year deficit or decrease in our funding if they would go that route for our operations. And so I know it's, it's one of those things. It's like, okay, you're helping some, but then for counties and for schools, it can hurt that too. So we'll see what happens. We'll talk about it a little bit more because we will ask you to approve the notice of the Thomas bus price tag, but it's $139,714. And you just think about, you know, two buses are $279,000. And then if we get hits like that, it's going to be a little bit more difficult, so. Also one that you might be interested in too, Senate Bill 287. They're actually asking school boards and other people to make sure they talk to their legislators. But that one basically talks about elections and they're still discussing that. We said it, don't they would, but they want to make it a partisan. In other words, you would have to identify as Republican or Democrat as far as school board elections. And so they brought that up to you, or yeah, last session, it did not pass, but there's more, more discussion about it, so we'll see what happens there. But really, we don't want the politics, there's enough politics. We really don't want that politics in our, in our school boards. At least that's my thing. So anyway, we'll keep you updated. If you want to be involved and call anybody, I can give you those numbers, things like that. That's my report, so.
Thank you, Mike. Next item is new business. Number one under new business is the recommendation to approve two bus purchases.
Yes. So as we already mentioned, and you received the packet on Friday. The low, again, we go with the co-op and the co-op goes with the different buses. And I'll have to go back up here again, and you guys know this, but for our audience here, let you know. So you have the Bluebirds, the IC Collins and the Thomas. And the Thomas came in as the low. So it's $139,714, asking to purchase two of those. And so you can see the total there, $279,425. So I just asked that you approve the recommendation to purchase those buses, which won't be here for a long, long time.
Well, yeah, I'm getting ready to ask, is a follow-up question, and once they've already been ordered, they'll be in for next fall?
I thought I could check on that.
Well, I just wondered.
I don't have that, I don't know.
Because I, I do know, like you said, it could be a lot of these. I don't understand that. No.
That is what it is. They love that part of life.
We think it'd be a lot better than I'd spend.
It's our business, huh?
What were you going to have?
I'll make a motion when we approve the Thomas buses. We've got a discussion.
I mean, yeah, you guys have any more discussion?
I'll second that.
Good, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next item, we have a couple of field trips. First one is an overnight out of state field trip for Northfield 7th and 8th grade choir to Choir Contest Festival, Music in the Parks. Right, yeah. May 9th through 10th, 2025, Kings Island theme park, Mason, Ohio. Do we want to do these together or somewhere? There we go. All right, the next one is a recommendation to approve the out of state field trip for Northfield Advanced PE class to Swiss Valley Ski Resort, Jones, Michigan, February 10th, 2025. Motion to approve those two field trips.
So.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So. Okay, next item is, is there any unfinished business?
Nope.
Board policy.
New board policy.
Okay, is there any public comment on all items?
I was trying to get it down here. Did you say the tax thing from Senate Bill 1 would be like a $700,000 hit?
$800,000.
$800,000.
They actually showed what Waukesha County would be hit as far as all of the county because it would be not just our school, but the other school districts, plus the towns and the cities, any municipal that we have in Waukesha County. I don't have that figure. I mean, I saw it, but it was, I don't know, 2.0, I don't know, it was 2.0 million. I forget what it was for sure, so.
All right. The items from the board members. We're done.
Can we stop this? Not bad.